This is a regular session. Could we please start with the real call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
President.
Councilmembers Bagley.
President.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Simori.
Here.
Santos.
Wit.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
All right, let's stand for our pledging of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at final call, publicly invited to be heard on any items at the end of the meeting. So we have the meetings to approve from July 9th. Is there any corrections or additions to be made? Would you sign that motion to approve the minutes? Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent. We also have to approve the minutes for the July 23rd regular session. Can I get a motion to approve the July 23rd minutes? Councilmember Simori.
I would move the July 23rd minutes.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent.
Mayor Coombs, you had one revision on a document on your agenda, and that was for nine app. It was emailed to you, just corrected a little verbiage in the last line of the resolution.
Okay, thank you. There's a report from the city manager.
No comments, Mayor Council.
All right, so we have a proclamation, let's see, designating August 15th, 2013 as Habitat for Humanity Day in Longmont, Colorado. So if there's people that'd like to come down and speak to that before I read the proclamation, or should I read it first and then you can come speak? All right, I'll read it first. Whereas Habitat for Humanity of the Saint Rain Valley was founded 25 years ago on August 15th, 1988, and whereas Habitat was completed, has completed 57 homes in partnership with low-income families in Longmont, and the Saint Rain Valley adding more than 8.6 million in assessed property values to Boulder and Weld counties, and whereas Habitat has worked with thousands of local volunteers to build these homes, and whereas Habitat has provided partner families with a nonprofit 0% interest mortgage in order to build more homes in the Saint Rain Valley, and whereas Habitat has built an additional 94 homes in Haiti, Nicaragua, Mexico, Colombia, Paraguay through its Habitat for Humanity International, and whereas Habitat continues to build homes and transform lives in the Saint Rain Valley. Now therefore, I, Dennis Alcooms, mayor by virtue of the authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim August 15th, 2013 as Habitat for Humanity Day in Longmont, and I encourage all citizens to volunteer for and financially support Habitat for Humanity of the Saint Rain Valley in its mission to provide safe, decent, and affordable homes to deserving families in Longmont and the surrounding communities. So, if I could come up and re-
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. My name's David Emerson. I'm the executive director for Habitat for Humanity. We have a couple of people here tonight. Board members, Katie and Teresa Pickner. We have our homeowners, Stephanie Rodriguez, who will be dedicating her home in September of this year. She's actually our 59th homeowner. But we wanted to thank you for all the support you've given to us over the years. As part of our 25th anniversary, it has been wonderful to go back and talk to homeowners and see how the homes have impacted their lives. Habitat homeowners have paid over $2.1 million in mortgage payments back to the Saint Rain Valley that's been reinvested in building more homes. Ten have paid off their mortgages. Habitat homeowners have paid over $415,000 in property taxes to the county. But what has been really inspiring is to really talk to the homeowners and get their stories. And while each of the homeowners have a story that's unique and demonstrates success, I'll just leave you with one, and that's the Rojas family was moved in in 1995. They have nine surviving children. All nine are traditional homeowners. Three are teachers within the Saint Rain School District. They have 22 grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren. So while we helped two individuals that broke the chain of poverty for nine families below them and helped 40 people, and we couldn't do it without the support of the council, so we appreciate the opportunity to be recognized tonight. Thank you.
Council, you want to come forward? Okay, the first person, publicly invited to be heard, is Mark Osborne. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mark Osborne. I live at 937 Danny's Court here in Longmont. We take it for granted that there is money in a revolving door between public and private institutions in Washington. It constantly undermines government policy and decision-making. Does that same corruption exist here around mosquito control policy in practice? Years ago, a group of us devoted about 500 hours to educating ourselves about spraying and permethrin. On several occasions, we presented what we had learned to the Longmont City Council. In that same timeframe, I attended a Boulder County citizens advisory meeting. I was very surprised to find that three of its board members were employees of Colorado mosquito control, and that these board members combined with the county employee appeared to have a majority to control this advisory board's recommendations to the county commissioners. I sat in this Longmont City Council chamber while a small group of county government employees made a presentation to council and answered their questions about mosquito control, practice, and policy. One of the county employees speaking was a former CMC employee. The former employee never revealed that, and the council quite understandably didn't think to ask the question about this individual's employment history. I looked at the county's website today. The current contact for the Boulder County mosquito control board is still that same employee. So, as a citizen, I noticed that I can have three minutes, but that the company that profits from spraying dominated the county's citizens advisory board, and its former employee had 30 minutes or more in front of my local city council. It's clear from our prior experience that CMC has a very comfortable relationship with many governments. I wish to trust each one of you, and I mean that very sincerely. And yet, I have to wonder if some of you have received campaign donations from CMC. These thoughts and observations suggest to me that something is wrong. I will be looking for much more listening and a real response to the voices that say it's not acceptable to spray a likely carcinogen on me, on children, on pets, and on private property. When we spoke to council years ago, no others spoke up. I'm gratified to see how many people showed up several meetings ago. This issue was catching a lot more attention this time around. Thank you.
Barbara Patton. Honored by Kimberly Gibbs.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm Barbara Patton. I live at 1010 Sixth Avenue in Longmont. And I love living in Longmont, and I'm not happy about the mosquito spraying that we're doing. So, I've checked, and I have discovered that there are many, many places in the country and in the world that have restrictions and bans on the use of pesticides. And so, there is recognition that pesticide use presents a hazard to human health and the environment. Some of these places are Washington DC, Fort Worth, Texas, San Francisco, New York City, Quebec, Nova Scotia, and Ontario provinces of Canada prohibit all mosquito spraying within city limits. The list is long. Oakland, California, Arcata, Fairfax, California, Lakewood, Lundhurst, Ohio, cities in Louisiana, Indiana, Maryland. A lot of school districts have prohibited the use of pesticides within and around certain boundaries of their schools. So, I share that with you in just saying we're not alone in recognizing there are health hazards connected to the pesticide use, and I really support us taking steps to protect the health of our citizens and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Gibbs, honored by Kara Kirk.
Good evening. My name is Kim Gibbs, and I live at 7468 Mount Sherman Road. On behalf of the Citizens for Quiet Skies, I would like to- On behalf of the Citizens for Quiet Skies, I would like to speak about the airport and mile-high skydiving. As the airport proprietor, the city has the authority to adopt reasonable regulations to reduce noise impacts to the community. There is a serious noise problem affecting North Boulder County that deserves your attention. You cannot govern the airspace, but you can limit the skydiving hours of operation and the number of operations. I'd like to share some statements made by an FAA director regarding the airport proprietor's authority. These are from a 2006 presentation titled Naples Airport Authority versus the FAA and FAA Perspective. Quote, "I agree that, one, an airport operator has full discretion to make its own judgment about the appropriate level of noise in the community and restrict use of the airport to achieve that level. Two, it was inherently reasonable for the authority to restrict aircraft that are responsible for complaints to provide a measure of noise relief to all those individuals living and or working in areas subject to airport and aircraft noise." The author, David Bennett, is a member of the Maryland Bar and served 16 years in the FAA Office of the Chief Counsel. When I spoke with him earlier today, he asked whether the city had conducted a noise study. His presentation follows the airport authority's successful lawsuit against the FAA. The city of Naples adopted an ordinance to ban stage-two aircraft in accordance with the Airport Noise Incapacity Act of 1990. The FAA, not surprisingly, declared the ban unreasonable and suspended their grant funding. Naples won on appeal, and the court agreed that the FAA had overstepped their authority. Thus, ongoing standstill is not due to a failure of authority, but rather to a failure of initiative. You have the opportunity to make Longmont and Boulder County a more desirable place to live. But the path to a comprehensive solution begins with a noise study and accurate data. I urge you to move forward with that effort now. Thank you.
Kara Cook.
I'm Kara Cook, and I've been retained by Citizens for Quiet Skies. I work for the law offices of Randall Weiner at 3100 Arapahoe, and that's in Boulder. I believe that everyone here believes in local government. You're all here on a Tuesday, you're city council members, you're the mayor, you believe that you can do something. And in this case, you can do something. This is something you can do for your own citizens. This is something the city of Longmont can do. And that is that they can regulate the noise problem at the Vance Brand Memorial Municipal Airport. And you can do so under three different theories. It's not just my own personal opinion. You actually have a lot of different ways that you can do this. First of all, the city of Longmont is actually the proprietor of the Longmont Airport. In other words, you're a landowner. And you have both the rights of a landowner and also the liabilities of a landowner when it comes to noise. And there are other cities that are proprietors of airports. You're not the only ones. For example, the city of Haywood in California actually regulates their own airport and regulates noise ordinances as the proprietor of an airport. And there's a famous case out of California about that called City of Haywood versus the Northern District of California. Another way that you can regulate the airport is that the aircraft that people have been disputing about, it's my understanding that there's something called non-stage aircraft. In other words, they're propeller-driven, they're older, they're for skydiving. And the FAA doesn't have a lot of regulations about non-stage aircraft. You can look at the regulations under Part 39 of the CFR. And the regulation, or sorry, the statute that Kim Gibbs already talked about, ANCA, specifically exempts non-stage aircraft from the FAA's regulatory ability because, you know, usually it's small business owners or just small community people who have non-stage aircraft. And finally, another way that you can regulate the airport is because the city of Longmont has already shown that it cares about noise pollution. You guys already have regulations and ordinances in place. And when a court looks to see whether or not a city can regulate or a local government can regulate an airport, they look to see whether or not that community already cares about those issues. Because that means that they're not just after an airport. It means that what they care about is their citizens. So in the case that Kim Gibbs talked about before, which is the City of Naples v FAA, the court found that because the city of Naples already had noise regulations in place and showed that it was a residential area where they really cared about noise problems, that it was okay that they regulated. And under Title 10 of your own, of the Longmont Municipal Code, you already regulate between the hours of 10 and 7. You say that if you can't have noise within, machinery can't make audible noise over 25 feet away. And I think that there are a lot of people here and a lot of people that I've read about in the newspaper who complain that they can hear airplanes. And I think we all know that airplanes are usually more than 25 feet away. So the city of Longmont already shows that it cares about this issue. And I think that the best thing to do is to take a stand and to do what you guys are here to do, which is regulate locally and protect your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber Snyder.
Hi, my name is Amber Snyder. I'm representing Babbling Instant Oil Change at 1061 South Hoover Road. We just got a citation from code enforcement last week stating that our signs that we put up at the store are special event signs and are not permanent. And under the Longmont Code for those signs, we have to get a special event permit. And under that permit, we are only allowed to display those signs 30 days out of every 90 days. For our business, that is a big deal because where we're located across from the mall, behind the McDonald's there, our entrance is kind of a hidden thing that's not easily seen. Those signs are put up there every day so that customers can get in and out of the business correctly. Not being allowed to have those signs there on a daily basis can potentially hurt the business because it's going to make it harder for people to find the entrance to get into that business. So what I'm asking is if we can get a variance for this permit during our business hours to leave those signs out on a daily basis.
Thank you very much. Dickson Burke.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'd like to announce tonight that we're having a group called the Friends of Fiber who are going to meet at the Tinker Mill, which is the hackerspace located at the mall next to the theater. We'll begin our first meeting on Thursday night at 7:00 PM. Public is invited. And we'd like to have our city employees, I believe are going to be present, to help answer questions about the upcoming fiber bond. While I'm here, I'd also like to draw the council's attention to recent activity among many successful cities that have municipal fiber, the city of Cedar Falls and their utilities, Cedar Falls Utility. Cedar Falls Utility has now 80% residential penetration, 90% business penetration, and were recently commented on by the Moody's Bond Agency very favorably with respect to their bond. And I thought that would be great for the council to know about. And Friends of Fiber, thank you very much.
Thank you. Johan Backman.
Council members, Mayor Coombs. I'm Johan Backman, 609 Teal Circle. Yeah, you got it pretty close. So I'm here to support and show support for the fiber network. I want the city to continue to do whatever you can to expedite the build-out. Whenever it's done, I will be your first customer. And I think I talk to a lot of people in the community, and I hear the same thing from them. So keep doing what you're doing. I'm also glad that Dixon brought up the Friends of Fiber. Dixon and I will join, and I hope many others will as well, to educate themselves and promote the fiber network build-out. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Miller.
Hi, I'm Dr. Stephen Miller, 10594 North 65th Street, Longmont. And I would like to talk about the midnight skydiving. And this kind of segues into what I think Kim Gibbs had said about having limitations on the skydiving operation. I happen to be on call at night. I have to work on Saturdays. I think that having the skydivers dive past 10 o'clock PM is not reasonable. I read in the Times call that Tim Barth was unaware that this was going to happen. I don't think that's acceptable. I think there ought to be a timeline after which they cannot dive because it keeps not 15 or 20 people awake, that was said in the paper. There's thousands of people that have to listen to this noise at night. And I think if they want to have more evening skydiving because people need to get their permits for night dives, they may have to do it more than once. But I think diving till midnight or 12:30 in the morning is not reasonable for the citizens in Longmont. And I don't know why the city has to knuckle down to let these few divers do whatever they'd like. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Wasson.
I'm Maria Wasson, 10594 North 65th Street. And I am here just to share a brief experience about the airplane noise. I work on the weekends. Last Friday night, I was awakened every 10 minutes between 10 and 11 o'clock by some airplane continually buzzing in my house, kept me awake. I woke up in the morning, again, didn't need an alarm clock, got buzzed at least five times by, I don't know what airplane. And then went outside, I teach horseback riding, and basically was unable to do my job because of the airplane noise above where I teach. So I would love it if you would consider doing some sort of noise abatement plan, hopefully to keep Longmont a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Strider Benson.
Good evening, Councilman and Mayor. I'm Strider Benson, 951 West 17th. Appreciate kudos to the Habitat. Worked for them at times. I'd like to speak about the 15th Amendment, which basically passed after a terrible civil war and said that citizens of this country shall not be prevented from voting according to the color of their skin. Well, that was overthrown. It took a 25-year space from 1885 to 1910 to completely destroy the 15th Amendment in the South. And now it's happening again with Citizens United that says that whoever has the most money can buy the most politicians, or all of them. And just last month, said that the Voting Rights Act no longer applies. Well, I put my life on the line for that Voting Rights Act, and it's crucial today. Even more so, North Carolina, Texas, for down the last 10 hours after the overthrow by the Supreme Court, Texas had already passed a new law to restrict the right to vote. There was another Supreme Court that overthrew the 15th Amendment in a case called Plessy v Ferguson that also corrupted our country. The Ku Klux Klan basically ran the South under the guise of the Democratic Party. The only change is now it's the Republican Party, and it's tragic. On a different note, I would like to point out three of my friends who just are receiving the Medal of Freedom. One was Mr. Club, Ernie Banks. I gave him a four-hour massage on his knees one time, and he got up and bounced around and said, "Man, I haven't been able to do that in 20 years." I hope I'm the only person that he ever tipped in his life. One was Santa Vivian, was one of the mentors of the movement in Nashville in 1960 and was one of the organizers and ministers in Selma, Alabama, when we were fighting for the right to vote. And I encountered him 20, 30 years later. Boy, that goes quick. I guess you can't hear the story. The other was Bayard Rustin, who participated in saving my life when I was being held in communicado in a different county and tortured in Mobile. And I got a phone call smuggled out to Stokely Carmichael, who called Bayard Rustin in New York and started the process that finally gave me due process of law, which I had been denied.
Thank you. God, that was not a straight man. Rick Luke.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rick Luke, 2330 Wedgewood Avenue, Apartment 10D in Longmont. Just like to talk about Item 11A on your agenda for the museum. Want to say thank you to the council members for your support on the museum and the auditorium project. Also thankful to thank, thank you to the staff that's worked hard on getting this project to this point. I know that Karen Roney and Jim Golden, Wes Jessup have been involved, and certainly they've had their staff involved. This is a very wonderful project that's going on. Forgot to mention, I am on the museum advisory board. I'm also on the Friends of the Longmont Museum Board of Directors. And just want to encourage you to continue your support and help us to keep going with the auditorium expansion project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, your first item is Ordinance 201333, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2013. We do not have a formal staff presentation on this item.
Do you have any questions from council before I open this up for public hearing? Is there, I'm going to open this up for public hearing. Is anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Robinson.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move Ordinance 201333.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Santos absent.
The next item is Ordinance 201334, a bill for an ordinance amending the 2013-2017 Capital Improvement Program. Again, we do not have a formal staff presentation.
Okay. I've seen no questions from council. I'll open this one up for public hearing. Is anybody in the public would like to speak on Ordinance 2013-34? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move Ordinance 201334.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Santos absent.
Next item is Ordinance 201335, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the following parcels of real property at the Vance Brand Municipal Airport. Hangar H13 to Horizon Flying Club LLC, H15 to Rose Marie Rimple, H4 to 2V2 Hangar H4 LLP, H28 to Mark Bryan and Greg Walagroski, H2 and H3 to Patrick's Hangars LLC, H18B to Keith Wayman, H63 to Lloyd F. Fisher, and H43 to Stephen F. Tatchick.
Okay.
We have no staff presentation.
I'll open this up for public hearing. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember, your time, Paul. Sorry.
He's absent tonight. I would move Ordinance 201335.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Santos absent.
Your next item is Ordinance 2013-36, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the City of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Bragg Spangler property to David Kelly. There is no staff presentation on this one either.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to speak on Ordinance 2013-36. I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos?
I would move Ordinance 2013-36.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Santos absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the consent agenda. First, 9A is Ordinance 2013-37, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 4.18.010 and Chapter 4.98 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Combining the Electric and Telecommunications Utility Enterprise Funds into the Electric and Broadband Utility Enterprise Funds. The second reading is scheduled for August 27th, along with a public hearing. Item 9B is ordinances 2013-38 and 39, which are airport hangar leases. Both public hearings and second readings will be scheduled for August 27th. The first one is bill for an ordinance authorizing the City of Longmont to lease the real property known as FBO Hangar Parcels 1 and 2, and South FBO Hangar Storage Parcels SH6T and SH9T to Chipewa Aerospace Inc., doing business as Elite Aviation. The second ordinance is authorizes the City of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel NHT2 to Airwest Flight Center Inc. Item 9C is Ordinance 2013-40, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 6.88 and 13.24, the Longmont Municipal Code on Tree Trimming Licenses in Trees and Plants. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for August 27th. Item 9D is Resolution 2013-67, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and Boulder County for the conduct and administration of the 2013 coordinated election to be held November 5th, 2013. Item 9E is Resolution 2013-68, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and Weld County and the Weld County Clerk and Recorder for the conduct of the 2013 coordinated election to be held on November 5th, 2013. Item 9F is Resolution 2013-69, submitting the ballot question to the registered electors of the City of Longmont, Colorado, path of municipal election to be held November 5th, 2013, of issuing bonds payable from the city's wastewater utility enterprise revenues to finance wastewater capital projects. Item 9G is Resolution 2013-70, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and St. Green Valley School District for the loan of the AMP exhibit. Item 9H is Resolution 2013-71, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the State of Colorado for access to the cotrip.org website. Item 9I is Resolution 2013-72, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the Colorado Department of Transportation for grant funding for pavement rehabilitation work on Main Street from 9th to 11th Avenue and from 15th to 17th Avenue. Item 9J is Resolution 2013-73, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and Longmont Housing Authority for the 2013 Road to Independence, Security, and Empowerment Program. Item 9K is Resolution 2013-74, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and Boulder County Housing Authority for its housing and community education program. Item 9L is Resolution 2013-75, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the City of Boulder as the lead agency for the Boulder County, Broomfield County Home Consortium for a subrecipient agreement for home funds. Item 9M is Resolution 2013-76, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and Longmont Housing Authority for a handicap modification project at 615 Main Street. Item 9N is approved and authorized the mayor to sign the 2013 and 2015 collective bargaining agreement with the Longmont Professional Firefighters Association, International Association of Firefighters Local 1806. And Item 9O is authorize the use of $43,247.30 of council contingency funding for the emergency mosquito spraying that occurred on July 19th and July 22nd. And staff would like to pull Item 9C for a presentation.
Should we also pull? Councilmember Wasson?
Actually, I was going to make the motion. Mayor, I'd like to move the consent agenda. I'm sorry.
Could we also pull F, 9F?
Thank you.
Councilmember Wasson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move the consent agenda minus Item C and Item F.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Santos absent.
Okay, Mayor Coombs, the item 9C is the tree trimming licenses and for trees and plants, the code changes, and Kim Sugar will make a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to quickly note two major changes in the ordinance that was based on comments we received at the July 9th council meeting. The first section is Section 13.24.080. And this section, we added additional language to explain when city staff would be entering on private property. So it'll be, one, if there's been appropriate consent, if it's an emergency situation, being imminent emergency, and we can't get ahold of the owner, but we need to correct, for example, a falling limb, or with a warrant. And then the next area of the ordinance that we modified was Section 13.24.150 that went through 13.24.170. And this section, we added additional language to further clarify the process of appeals and the conditions and who will, and who would be addressing those issues. So with that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Councilmember Wasson?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Thank you for making those changes, it made me much happier. The question I have now is, in 13.24.170, now that we've made those changes, I didn't get a chance to read Chapter 2.98 of the code, so what would the appeal process be? In the event that someone, in the event that I get a letter from the Director of Public Works and Natural Resources, they give me written notice, and they say, "You've got to fix this tree, it doesn't comply, pursuant to," whatever, what, what is the appeals process? What happens now?
So the appeal does go to the city manager, or the Director of Public Works and Natural Resources, but then it would go to a hearing officer. So the same, so the director would not be presiding over it.
So it's the same, the same process as every appeal of the city municipal code? Is that correct?
Yeah, Council Eugene A, City Attorney. Yeah. Ordinance Section 2.98 is just the default hearing procedures for any appeal that doesn't otherwise provide for a process. And so the city attorney's office has drafted procedures for a hearing officer to hear the case, all in compliance with due process.
Thank you. I move, where did my agenda go? I move this one. What is it? I move Ordinance 2013-40.
Okay, let's vote. Whoops. Okay, this passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Santos absent.
Okay, Mayor Coombs, the other item pulled was 9F, which is a resolution regarding the ballot question on the wastewater capital projects. And Bob Allen's here to address questions.
Councilmember Allen. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm not stupid, well, I may be, but not by, not evidence, but a question I'm about ready to ask. I just want to know, why is this important to the city? And what needs to happen? And in the event that this ballot initiative doesn't go on the ballot, and if it fails, what's going to happen?
Mayor and council. Hopefully I can answer that question. The purpose of issuing debt is to mitigate the impact of having the need for cash to fund capital improvements on the rates. If debt isn't issued in the form of bonds, we would have to find a different, or an alternative method of financing. That likely would be a pretty substantial rate increase, probably somewhere in the range of two to three times what residents pay today. That would be a pretty extreme increase.
So, so what I just heard was, we need to pass this, because if we don't, we're being required by the federal government, and our rate increase with our utilities would be two to three times what we pay now.
We are, we would be required by the federal government to make the upgrades through the primacy given to the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. We're not being required to come up with any specific financial means for doing that. That's obviously within our purview. This is our best recommendation for providing the finance and mitigating the immediate impact on the rate payers. So it's an unfunded mandate that we have to figure out a way to pay for. In effect, it is, yes.
That's what I just, I figured it's a good idea to hear this over and over again, so thanks for being here tonight. I move Ordinance, Resolution 2013-69.
Okay, let's vote. Councilmember Wasson?
Yes, hi. I just want to make sure that this, I don't really consider this an unfunded mandate. There are certain pollution controls and obligations we have under the Clean Water Act, and also state statutes to not pass downstream additional nitrogen, ammonium, ammonia, and all these other chemicals that would be discharged from our wastewater treatment plant, just like we wouldn't want to accept increased nutrient levels from other municipalities who might be dumping into the St. Green. Once it goes through our plant, we do have an obligation to send the same quality of water ahead, don't we, Mr. Allen?
Indeed, the purpose for the regulation, the purpose for the Clean Water Act is to, in effect, bring better levels of quality to our surface waters in the U.S. And, and yes, that is, I think, the thought process, and that is endemic within the Clean Water Act, that we get a little bit better all the time and, and provide better downstream water.
So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I don't consider this an unfunded mandate, because having clean water is a very, I mean, you go to countries that don't have clean water, and they would consider it, clean water is to be a very high on the list of resources that human beings need to operate daily. So I just wanted to not, not go along with the idea that this is an unfunded mandate. Clean water is great to have. We get it clean, we push it along clean.
Councilmember Wasson?
And yet, the federal government isn't giving us any money to pay for these increased standards which they are enforcing. That makes it an unfunded mandate. It doesn't mean it's a bad unfunded mandate, but it is an unfunded mandate. But potato, potato, carry on.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I was just going to point out, I love you to death, Councilmember Wasson, but it is a mandate, which they are not providing funded for, funding for, and ergo, semantically, it is an unfunded mandate. But my whole point in asking my question was not to debate this. We need to put this on the ballot, and we need to make sure it gets passed, for all the reasons that Councilmember Wasson said. It's good to have clean water and make sure we're responsible, but it's also good to avoid fines, fees, and penalties that we're surely going to incur if we do not accept this mandate.
Councilmember Wasson?
Actually, there is funding available for this. We choose not to use community development block grant money to fund these kind of things, but community development block grant money can be used to fund upgrades that would make you more compliant with wastewater standards under the Clean Water Act, I just want to put that in there. Plus, there is a federal government program that does, it's, goes through the states where you can access a revolving loan fund. So we don't necessarily, we could have also looked at, it's not very well funded right now, but there are other methods besides this. This is going to get us there quicker and with less brain damage. But there are federal government resources to pay for these things, so it's not, we don't use them, other communities do.
Councilwoman Wasson?
And I would respectfully ask Councilmember Wasson to please bring in the references for that next week. I would love to see that. I would love the references, thank you.
All right, we've got a motion, it's in second, and let's vote. Okay, ready? Okay. That passes 6 to 0, Councilmember Santos absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is general business, museum expansion, construction, funding plan, and Karen Roney will present this.
Thank you, Valerie. Members of city council, mayor, my name is Karen Roney, I'm the community services director here for the city. And we also have Jim Golden hopping down here, the staff finance director, and what we'd like to do is to, to make a brief presentation about this particular item. I will certainly talk about the progress with the museum capital campaign, and if you have any specific questions about the proposal in terms of the inter-fund loan, Jim can answer questions that I might not be able to. So I am, so you all know about the capital campaign. I am pleased to announce that we are at a little over $3.8 million in both cash and pledges made to the campaign, which leaves us, we are at less than 10% left to raise for our $4.2 million campaign. So the Capital Campaign Standing Committee has been doing great work, the community has been very responsive, and we are really at a milestone in, in the project. So one of the things that staff had talked about when we were meeting with the Capital Campaign Committee is that, when we reach that 90% level of pledges that come in on the capital campaign, that we would really be in a position to come forward and to ask city council to consider a, kind of an interim financing plan, so that we would have the ability to move forward with the, the next phase of the project, which would be to do the final design review, and then to begin to develop the construction documents, and to bid the project for, to begin construction. So we are in a position where, you know, right now, we have a little more money to raise, and the other piece of the, of this in terms of the capital campaign is that donors have up to three years to pay their pledges. So we have donors who have pledged money, and, but they have three years to, to pay that money. So we do have a, a gap in financing, and what we are proposing this evening is for council to consider an inter-fund loan from the fleet fund to help us bridge that gap, and to help us be able to move forward with, with the construction phase of the, of the project. So just a, a couple of details. So as I mentioned, we have, we have pledges and cash in the amount of $3.8 million. And right now, what we have received to date in terms of cash is a little bit over $2.1 million, which means that we have about $1.7 million that, that remains to be, come in as far as cash. Of that $1.7, we included in the council communication, is that a little over $1.2 million is, remains to be paid by the Stewart family. And we are working with the Stewart family, we are working at a, an agreement with them, and which they are reviewing right now, and we anticipate that that will be signed very soon. That gives us a specific schedule on when, when the Stewart family plans to pay their remaining $1.2, $2, $3 million. The $250,000 of that, $1.7, is, is also the city's recent matching contribution that, that we need to appropriate into the, into the budget. And we also have $125,000 from two foundations, that would be from the Vetcher Foundation and the Gates Foundation. the money for the, uh, conception of the museum expansion, then indeed, they would release their, um, $125,000 to the campaign. So what that leaves us with is, um, just a little less than $100,000 from individual donors who have pledged but have not yet, um, who are gonna take another two or three years to pay off their, um, off their pledge. So between the, um, the $371,000 we still are raising and the $96,000 in those individual pledges, so it's about, um, $470,000 that, um, that we believe that we do, um, require a, a loan from. And what we're proposing is from the fleet fund to, um, to, to capture that amount and, um, so that we could come back and do the, um, the full preparation for the, uh, $4.2 million into the public improvement fund for the museum expansion and that we could move forward with, uh, construction document preparation and releasing the, um, the bid. So, um, I think the other thing that I do want to, uh, mention and then open it up to, um, to questions that you might have is that the, um, four, the $470,000 that would be, uh, loaned from the fleet fund, they have also arranged or also have an agreement with the Friends of the Museum, and they have, um, they have signed their agreement that says that they have a, um, they have an additional $150,000 and that if indeed, um, you know, we fell short of our pledges or we had some pledges that were not collected, because roughly about 5% of the capital campaign, um, you might have 5% of the, um, the donors who had good intentions at the time but didn't necessarily follow through with their, their pledge for whatever reason. And so, um, so the Friends of the Longmont Museum have indicated, um, and they have, um, pledged that, uh, that they would pay up to $150,000 to, um, to basically fill any unfulfilled, um, gaps in, in terms of pledges, as well as we have $80,000 in the museum trust fund that would also go toward that effort. So that's around $230,000 that we, um, we kind of have, um, reserved if indeed, we aren't able to, if all the pledges, uh, do not come in for, um, for, for the campaign. So, so really what that liability is for the city of Longmont from our perspective is about, um, $250,000. The capital campaign committee has been, um, doing great. We are continuing to really focus on selling the seats, the, um, the VIP seats and the patron seats. So if anyone's listening, we have plenty left for sale. $3,000 for a patron seat and $6,000 for a VIP seat. And then this month, we really are launching, uh, what we call the public campaign. So, um, so we have many other contributors, potential contributors in the community that would love to, um, support this effort that maybe can't at that, you know, that $3,000 or $6,000 level. And so we are really would be opening it up to, um, all the other types of, um, contributions and amounts. Um, we will accept all of those. And the campaign committee is working very hard to finish getting that final $370,000 pledge to the, um, to the campaign. So tonight, what we are asking, uh, city council to do is to, um, approve the request to make a, um, an inter-fund transfer of 400, up to $470,000 from the fleet fund, um, to the capital, um, to the museum expansion CIP project so that we can move forward with the, um, we are in the final design review right now, but then we can move forward with the construction documents and, um, to be able to, um, release, uh, to basically bid the project. And all of the, um, the, the money, as you know, um, has to be before we release a bid or sign a, a contract with a contractor, um, that money for, um, for the total cost of that construction does have to be appropriated into the city's, um, budget before we can proceed with that. Did I, okay. So Jim Golden and Karen Roney and Wes Jessup, our museum manager, would love to answer any questions that you might have about our proposal.
Councilmember Levison?
So, um, all the contributions towards this are tax deductible?
Uh, Councilmember Levison, yes, they are.
And so if they go to, whether or not they go to the museum or they could be donated to the Friends of the Museum, um, either one of those two funds.
So, and then, Councilmember Levison, um, so the Friends of the Museum, they are a father one C3, they are the recipients of the donation. But, um, um, but certainly there are the equal tax benefits. I shouldn't say equal because I don't know that for sure. But I know that, um, so for example, Lila Stewart, she, her initial donation was directly to the city of Longmont. So there are tax benefits whether you donate to the city of Longmont or the Friends of the Museum. Not a lot of people want to donate a million dollars to the city of Longmont, but there are, um, similar.
Wait, 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 wait. There's a million dollar donors out there. We just haven't asked.
Right. But there are, um, there are tax benefits. We are, uh, for donations coming to either entity, but the Friends of the Museum is, um, is the group that is coordinating the capital campaign. And then those, we have certainly an agreement with the Friends. Um, and then they basically will, um, will turn that money over to the city. Um, so again, that would be money that we would have to appropriate into the, um, into the capital improvement, um, fund for us to proceed. So.
And then, um, two other questions. So, um, if, uh, I'm assuming that any, we're gonna continue to look at fundraising as well as the Friends fundraising for any shortfall of pledges so that the city is not gonna be, I mean, we've already, um, authorized $250,000 of, um, you know, unallocated monies from a 2012 budget towards this effort. We're not gonna be asked to come back and anything unallocated from 2013, donate, you know, donate, give ourselves, reallocate to, uh, you know, fund the museum. And then, that's one question. And then the last question is, every construction pro, project runs over. And with the recent, um, increase in the bid for the alleyscape, do we have some wiggle room for the budget of this project?
Mayor and Councilmember Levison? So our intention is absolutely not to come back to the city of Longmont and ask for, and actually, the city has invested $500,000 total into this project. Um, so that is, is not our intent, and, uh, we hope that that is not where we end up. Um, we have, um, the, the goal still for the capital campaign committee is, i, i, as we look at, uh, we would like to sell all of those seats. If we sold all of those seats, it's, um, about $750,000. Our, um, our goal is to sell all of those seats and to raise money in addition to the 370 that, that meets our campaign goal at $4.2 million for certainly the reason that you, you talked about. Um, we, we just don't know. We certainly have had budget estimates on the, um, on the, the project. So, you know, we feel pretty confident. We've made some adjustments in the project due to the budget estimates or the, um, construction estimates. But we never know. And we also have contingency funds certainly that are allocated as, as with any, um, construction project.
You know, I'm gonna support, I've done all the fundraisers, uh, for this project. And, uh, I, I just think that the people that have made these pledges are quality people and they're gonna deliver on these pledges. So I feel very confident that our risk level here as a city is very low. I think, I would like to see this thing move forward sooner rather than later. And I'm gonna fully support this, uh, project and I hope, uh, everybody else does too.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Uh, first of all, I'm the liaison to the museum advisory board, uh, not a member, just a liaison, lazing. I said lazing, Councilmember Levison, yes, liaison. But the English language is evolving all the time. So I liaison. But anyway, the, uh, the, uh, uh, my question is, uh, okay, my concern is that community members, I'm behind this, by the way. Uh, but my concern is that, uh, we had a couple weeks ago, we had a discussion on not having enough money to fund our parks. And, uh, Councilman Bagley and Councilman Samori, we want a swimming pool, competitive swimming pool. Uh, there's a lot of issues in our community right now. We just don't have the money. And so the vote tonight, is this a vote, and I know the answer, but I just want to hear city staff and you, Ms. Roney, say it. Is this a vote to actually give more out of the general fund in order to spend it towards building this museum?
Mayor and Councilmember Bagley, this is actually a loan, um, a, a interim loan from the fleet fund, which will be totally paid back with interest to the fleet fund. So there will be no additional general fund monies when the project is done. All the money comes in that would go into the construction of this project.
So this isn't a vote for city council to spend city money. It's just funding money which will be paid back with interest.
Correct.
Okay. My other question is, uh, the $250,000 the city did pay, or, or commit to pay back in April, uh, it needs to be appropriated. So just out of curiosity, what's the difference between voting in April and saying, use it, but it still needs to be appropriated? Does that mean we still have to do something as a city council?
Um, Mayor and, uh, Councilmember Bagley? Yes. So what, um, so for example, and Jim can add to this, um, so, so tonight, if you give us direction to move forward, there will be three things that we'll come back to for official action. So tonight is official, but we have to bring back more formality. So we would bring back, um, a formal resolution that, um, that you vote on for the direction that you would give us this evening about the inter-fund loan from the fleet fund to the public improvement fund. Um, and then we also with the next additional appropriations ordinance, uh, similar to the one you passed tonight, we would, um, we would appropriate all of those dollars necessary for the museum expansion construction project, would appropriate those into the 2013 general fund budget, um, or the public improvement fund. And then third, we would bring back a, um, a capital improvements, um, project amendment for the museum expansion that, um, you know, that updates that and, um, and has, and shows the, the full amount being, um, being funded.
Thank you. And last but not least, just out of curiosity, I know that there's currently an agreement being worked on between the city and the Stewart family, uh, in order to confirm that the 1.23 million's coming our way. Um, is there a likelihood, what is the likelihood and what are the chances that we go ahead and somebody moves that we ask the city to prepare a resolution, uh, creating this fleet fund loan, so to speak, um, and then having the Stewart family for some reason decide not to donate that 1.23? What are the, I mean, that, that would be my only concern, that we spend 400, 500,000 dollars and then the museum never happens. That would not be good.
So Mayor and, uh, city council, um, when we bring back the resolution to you, uh, formalizing this action, um, we will also bring back, uh, a copy of the signed agreement, um, from the Stewart family. So, um, we, we will not ask council for that action until we have that signed agreement with the Stewart family, which is an irrevocable a, agreement for those, um, for that, the remainder of their contribution.
Thank you, Karen.
Councilmember Samori?
So with all this discussion, great job. I think this project has been in the works for a long time. And I know that the Stewart family is very committed to this project. So the likelihood of them backing out is nil. With that, I would move the recommended option, option number one.
Second. Councilmember Kinley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to let everybody know, I'm in favor of this too. And I'm always amazed at the generosity of the citizens of Longmont and, and, and to also to Lila Stewart in particular. We're very lucky to have her in our community and to help us out this way. And with that, let's vote. That's your job.
Six to zero with Councilmember Santos Sampson.
Thank you, members of the city council. And just, uh, um, just FYI to get on your calendars is that we are, um, tentatively planning a groundbreaking on October 4th. Uh, that is a Friday evening from 5:30 to 7:30 in conjunction with the opening of our Dia de los Muertos exhibit at the museum. So more to come, and we are very excited to be moving forward. So thank you very much for your action.
Thank you, Karen. And thanks to the city council members for supporting me and us. Uh, I guess it's time for, uh, final call, public invited, you heard. Is there anybody like to speak for final call, public invited, you heard?
Greetings, Mayor Coombs, uh, city council, um, Strata Benson, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. My apologies to the timekeeper. Uh, speaking is physically very difficult for me, so I tend to get very frustrated with clocks. Um, I'd like to just wrap up a little of what I was saying. Bayard, Bayard Rustin was a really major figure in this country. And he also did a lot of, um, confinement time. Um, he was a pacifist in World War II, a, a great organizer. And, um, he was the organizer of the March on Washington in 1963. And, um, he and Ella Baker went down to Montgomery in 1956 and created the proposal and brought it forth that created Martin Luther King's, uh, forthcoming organization of Southern Christian Leadership Conference. And I worked with them, as did Reverend C.T. Vivian, who was one of the mentors in Nashville, which was, uh, one of the beginning sites of the civil rights movement. And I'd like to give one little story about C.T. Um, uh, I did not see him for 25 or 30 years. And, uh, when I met him again after this time span, I think it was in Selma in the 90s, um, I posed to him a serious question. There was, uh, an explosive circumstance in Chicago in about 1968 where there was almost a race war that blew up. Uh, a young black kid had walked into Mayor Daley's neighborhood, uh, looking for a job, and he got attacked by Ma'ba white kids and was beaten to death. And there was reaction in the black community. And Reverend Vivian, C.T., was coming into town. And some leader in the black community had said that we have to stop white people from coming into the black community. And, uh, it was very, very expressive. And C.T. just got off the plane and came in and they, and, and he gave a speech supporting that. And I confronted him with this 25 or 30 years later. And I asked him, what was going on? What did you, what did you do? And he said, I had just gotten off the plane. I did not know the circumstance that way. And I read the speech and it was live on TV. And he apologized to me. I don't know if he did so publicly, but I accept that. He's a great man. And his wife, Octavia Vivian, wrote a wonderful biography of Coretta Scott King about two years ago. I hope it gets in our library. But, uh, thank you for the chance.
Okay, it's time for mayor and council comments. Have any, Councilmembers, Councilmember Kinley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to mention my business of the week. Everybody thinks it's gonna be Lucky's Market because it's opening, it's opened this week. Uh, and that is a wonderful thing we should all go see. But my business of the week is Main Street Car Wash at 2025 Main Street. I had an experience, uh, which is not unusual in Longmont, but I was in a hurry, uh, this weekend as usual and ran through and took my car to the car wash. Well, I'd left my cell phone in there. There was a credit card in there and several other things in there. And when I, I didn't realize I'd left them all in there. When I got my car, after they'd cleaned it, there were all those things, just, uh, you know, laid very carefully where I could see them. And, uh, that's just the kind of people we have here in Longmont. So go try Main Street Car Wash. You might find something you lost in your car.
Councilmember Red?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, the ribbon cutting for Lucky's is tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. Um, also, I am going to be unable to, uh, do coffee with council at the end of the month. I've asked Councilmember Samori if he could sub for me. He said that was fine. He said that was fine. And there's one more important thing that is almost escaping me. Oh, Brad Power, congratulations on being appointed to the Urban Land Institute as a trustee. We're very proud of you. Thank you so much for your service, not only to Longmont, but to that organization.
Councilmember Levinson.
So I know most students that are K-12 know that the party is over this week. Summer vacation ends. I just want to wish everybody, including parents and teachers, students, a successful start to the school year. And since we've all gotten used to going through school zones without seeing the flashing lights, I want to remind everybody to take a few minutes and slow down, give yourself a couple of extra minutes, because we're going to have those school zones. And you really want to be careful so that everybody gets to school and works safely every day. So happy beginning of the school year to everybody, and I hope it's very successful. And I also had an opportunity to stop into the new K-8 Timberline School. They're going to be having their opening for the community September the 5th. So I just ask people to put that on their calendar, because it's rare that we get a brand-new school opening that's had a big construction project. And I just hope the traffic flow works out up there, because it's going to be a lot of kids in one location, so.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I've not called anyone about this idea, and I'm not going to make a motion, but I think that as a council, we should consider it. And it's not for the reason that most people, I think, would accuse me of making this suggestion. And it's only 8:15 tonight, so I think it's a great time to bring it up. I think we should consider putting all public invited to be heard at the end of the meeting. And here's why. And it's not because I don't want to hear the public, but we heard some pretty important things during our public invited to be heard earlier, and I've got some thoughts on it, but nobody's here. You know, I would like to discuss just for a moment the airport, but I don't see them. And I would like to discuss the mosquito spraying, but I don't see them. And so I think that on one hand, it would, you know, we can get to the city's business sooner, and then we can still address the public's concerns. But then, if need be, during this little time here, this is when we're supposed to have council comments. And I've got some comments, but I don't think anybody in the room cares. You care?
Yeah. It's always recorded, too.
Okay. So I mean, that's the first thing. So just consider it. I may or may not make a motion at some point in the future. And if there's something on the agenda that needs to be discussed during a public hearing, those same people have the opportunity to stand up and, at that time, address the pertinent, relevant issues. So anyway, just something to consider. So my thoughts during Mr. Osborne, his comments, as an elected official, I think everybody has the right to know what we're thinking. And so I'd like to just kind of share what I'm thinking. First of all, I don't think any of us have received campaign contributions from the mosquito companies, the mosquito lobby. I think, as I've talked with city staff, my understanding is that a decade ago, people were upset about West Nile, and they came behind the podium, and they started telling city council that, well, you need to do something about West Nile. And so city council back then did something. And they looked into it, and they started spraying for mosquitoes. While I'm sitting here as an attorney, I'm kind of, it's not a judicial capacity here, but I am kind of using the mind that I use in the courtroom, and I'm hearing the word likely carcinogen over and over again. And I'm weighing likely carcinogen against known health threat. I do not want pesticides to be sprayed into our air or on me, whether voluntarily or involuntarily. But in law, we have what's called the choice of evils. It means, and one time I actually got off of a traffic ticket. I was following a car, and he was weaving like he was drunk. It was a new highway, and I had a choice. I could either zip around him and speed, or face the possibility, as he kept braking and driving erratically, of getting in an accident. So my argument was, I had the speed, because I had to get out of danger. The judge bought it, and I got off. And he should have bought it, because it was true. It was true. But the whole point is, we have to make a decision. Do we either want to suffer the potential effects of a likely carcinogen, or do we want to suffer the known effects of West Nile virus? And we don't nuisance spray. We only spray when the mosquitoes, that vector gets over one, and right now, I think it's like a 3.7, and they're spot spraying. I don't want that, but it sure as heck beats dying in West Nile. And I know that there are all kinds of nausea and dizziness, but those are the same things that come along with West Nile, except with West Nile, you die soon. So anyway, that's what I'm thinking. I don't want to be sprayed, but until I hear another solution, I don't necessarily want to engage in that public debate. And then as far as quiet skies and their concerns, the airport, I don't want noise in the air either. And I heard the lawyer tonight talk about us being a proprietor, and how non-stage aircraft are exempt, and that we, as a city, have regulations that limit noise, and we can do things. That's true. But here's a caveat that I wish someone who's smarter than me could come up with, and that is, we can't single out one particular plane. We can pass a law that says there will be no stage-two aircraft, or we can pass a law that says no aircraft will operate in a city above the decibel level of 65. Or we can say, we can pass that law, but then we don't have aircraft. And so there are those people that might fly up once during a week. They would still be impacted by the law if we regulate it. So how do you regulate and specify one troublemaker without basically saying, let's close the airport, because we can't discriminate against one individual? So I'm not saying there's nothing that we can't do. I'm just saying that someone out there, they're not here tonight, but were earlier, I'd like a solution. What do you do? Because banning all aircraft of stage-two or non-stage aircraft just isn't the solution. So those are my thoughts tonight during public invited to be heard. And I wish that I could talk to those people now after the meeting. It would be nice.
Councilmember Witt.
Sorry to jump back in the queue. But Councilmember Bagley, I appreciate your thought process. And I know this has been a touchy subject when we're talking about, how do we balance making sure that everybody gets the chance to share their concerns with getting our work done? And many other communities, they have a set time period whereby we've got 45 minutes for public invited to be heard, and then we have to get to our business, and then it carries over to the end of the meeting. I know other communities that set aside, if there's a hot topic that a lot of people want to share their opinion on, I'm thinking of Douglas County. They had an all-day-long public testimony day, and people came in all day long. And so I think there, I think there are ways that we can honor people's right to free speech while not pushing our agenda so late in the evening that we're too tired to get the work done. So I, and I'm interested in exploring those things, but we'll have to do it fast. While I'm still here, the second thing that I need to talk about was, this week, I had a three-page letter from a constituent under my doorstep, and it was not signed. And, "Dear constituent, I do not receive mail at my house. If you want to contact me, you can email me, you can call me directly, you can drop a letter off at the city clerk's office, but I will not be acting on your concerns until you do it in the appropriate fashion." Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, I actually forgot to ask something. One of the other speakers that we had come up to the podium talked about the Valerian business person about signage. I know that on Main Street, we have some temporary signs, and I just want to make sure that staff addresses. So city manager, would you mind looking into that issue? And I believe the Valerian, I mean, I've never really have had a problem noticing that business on Hofer, but I can understand people's concerns that signs that they may have had out forever, all of a sudden now code enforcement showing up on their door. But on the other hand, we do have a sign ordinance, and everybody can't keep putting signs out, you know, by the sidewalk directing people in, because it gets a little bit cluttered. And if they're temporary signs, you know, they could blow into the roadway perhaps, or somehow block the sidewalk or something else. So if we can't look into that, that would be great to address those issues.
I'll be working on that. First off, I would like to take my hat off to Valerie. She read through 15 carcinogen items just flawlessly, so great job. Also, you know, as far as campaign contributions, all that is public record. If anyone wants to look up how any of us are receiving donations for campaigns, the only thing that's over $50, $50 or over is, you know, it's public record. So yeah, first thing, I read it. You know, both of us have gotten campaign contributions from a mosquito spraying company, and, you know, good luck with that. So anyway, I guess that's all I have. So city manager, do you have any additional remarks?
A couple items, Mayor, in response to Councilmember Levinson's question. Actually, Sean's working that issue. It came to our attention yesterday, so we are on top of that one. And I think he met with the individual and said that he would be in touch with them tomorrow to go into that issue more in depth. I think Valerie wants to talk about scheduling a time to do interviews for board appointments. One of the things that we've talked about as staff is potentially looking at doing videotaping and getting a set of standardized questions and doing videotaping, and then providing those videotapes to council, because we know scheduling that has been difficult at times. So I'll let Valerie take the conversation from here, but if council's interested in us looking at videotaping those interviews, we would certainly be happy to do that. Valerie?
So we have, we are recruiting. The deadline is August 16th. You have a pre-session or an executive session on the 27th. So the first available dates for interviews are not until September, September 3rd or 10th. And while this, we don't have a lot of boards or positions for you to interview for, we would need to schedule those prior to one of those meetings, or we could use this as kind of a pilot to see how video interviewing process would go for you. So it's up to you, but I need to schedule interviews if that's what you want to do.
Councilmember Levinson.
You know, I think that we've been trying to make the process a little less intimidating. We streamlined the application. It is really intimidating to sit in front of a camera and read off answers to questions. I, you know, we did away with several years ago, the five-minute candidate spiel that you could do on the public access channel. That was done away with. And I just think that that's even more stilted. And then there's no give and take. I think council's opinion was that we were all interviewing together because we wanted to see if there was some rapport, to have some questions answered, and just to have a scott set of questions. What else would we go beyond what is in the application? I think we need to get the flavor of the person. And that's my sense of why we decided not to just, you know, interview, you know, three-on-three as we used to. I would maybe suggest if we wanted to do a pre-session, or even if we had a shorter meeting one time, we could do it afterwards. But we never can predict how long the meetings are going to go. Maybe we could do, I don't know, maybe just a few council members if it's, there's scheduling conflict as long as we get for. Well, whatever works. Councilmember Witt, I know, we've been round and round with this, but whatever seems to work, and we have an addition, we're not interviewing right now for the resignation for Parks and Rec Board either, are we? So we've had an additional resignation since then.
We have, we have year-end board applications probably opening in another month, so.
Another month.
Yeah. So I've talked to Parks and Rec, and they can hold out till then.
Okay. Well, I would be in favor of just, if we want to interview these several people that are looking at the six or eight board positions we have open, I think we try to do it as quickly as we can, and maybe we can, I hate working on a Saturday again, but if it's going to take working on a Saturday, or maybe an afternoon that council doesn't meet, I'd be willing to do it on a Monday at 5:00 or 5:30 if there was a consensus of other council members.
Councilmember Witt.
I think I am supportive of the idea of doing videotapes for the simple reason that it allows all council members to have, see all of the people interviewed. I don't think it's any more intimidating than coming and speaking to all seven of us. That was intimidating. And we had people who dropped out rather than come and talk to all seven of us at one time. That was intimidating. I think that this is probably, it's not just the council members who, it's hard to schedule all those council members, but the people who'd like to serve on those boards. And I think that this is a way whereby we can use, we have the technology, and we should use it. And I think if there are situations that people feel very uncomfortable doing that, let's deal with that if it comes up. But I don't think that we should automatically dismiss the idea of using this opportunity just because some people might find it intimidating. I think that we've started down this path of how do we do this better? And I would like us to see how this works. It seems like we would be able to watch all these at, you know, 7:00 o'clock in the morning, when it wouldn't be convenient for other people. I think it's a good idea, and I would support staff's recommendation.
Mayor, I think that does provide more flexibility for both the applicant and the interviewers. You know, one suggestion I had is, last time, we had a lot of people, a lot of boards where people were reapplying, you know, and they were, you know, long-term serving members, and there wasn't anybody, I mean, there was two returning members that were already on the board just reapplying. So I don't see why we would spend a whole lot of time interviewing, because there's really no decision, we were going to reappoint them anyway. So I mean, if there's times like that, we could probably streamline the interview process by not requiring it, just, but that's my thoughts. But I agree with Katie. I think we should give it a try, see if video interviewing is, would work well for both the interviewer and interviewer.
Mayor Coombs?
Yes.
If council would like to try the video interviewing, we could certainly even entertain having a council member come in and conduct the interviews on videotape, if you want to do that. I mean, it doesn't have to be staff, but I assume having someone to speak to rather than just a camera is more comfortable.
Okay. Good idea. Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Part of the reason why I was, I might even have been the genesis behind it, was I? Under city ordinance, we're all required to vote unless there's conflict of interest. And I just thought it was silly and felt uncomfortable that I was voting for people that I didn't know. And so I didn't have the data to make a decision. So I still think it's a good idea that council get as much information as possible. I still think it's a good idea that all of council interact and interview with people that we will be voting on. However, that doesn't mean that it has to happen face-to-face. I was not here for half the interviews, because I was out of town last time, and I was faced with the same problem that I had the first time when we were intentionally splitting up the interviews. And I think having, I mean, one, three, I don't know, but having a videotape of that interview is like being there, it's just that we're not allowed to ask questions, and our other council members are perfectly capable of asking the questions. And so I think that regardless of what we do, just videotaping the interviews is a great idea.
idea. That way, we can save time and fast-forward and click delete and all kinds of stuff. So I think it's a great idea. That's a joke, times call. That's a joke.
Councilmember Levison.
I think we can delete that last comment. I think we can try it. The one thing to me would be that we don't get to see the body language. We don't get to interact and get a feel for the personality, because it's going, you know, it's going to be reserved when it's on camera. It doesn't hurt to try it. And I disagree with you, Mayor, in terms of why bother interviewing returning candidates or other candidates. We may reappoint the same people on the board, but I think it's always good to interview as many candidates as possible, because we might occasionally find somebody that may be better suited than the existing candidates.
And also, I'm referring to the recent additional candidates.
Right. Okay. Then I would agree with you.
Okay. Councilmember Levinson.
And so I guess if we're exploring this idea of videotape, I don't want to make it burdensome to the Cable Trust staff either, because the trust is, my assumption is, it would be done at that, at the studio. And the studio's only open from like 8:30 to 5:00. Or would we just have anybody, like, sit in front of Skype or do a flip cam? Or if they don't have the technology, they can go ahead and somehow access technology through the city? I'm just looking to see what the mechanics of the concept would be. And would it hamper somebody who couldn't get in between 8:30 and 5:00 and didn't have the technology to do it themselves?
Do you want me to address?
Yeah. Go ahead, Valerie.
We can, yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, we haven't worked out the mechanics, because we just threw this idea out, but I think that we can actually work through those issues very easily and actually be very flexible for the interviewees as well. So I think we can work out through the issues, even if it is channel.
Yeah, and I think it can be something that we can do as staff. The other day, just to give you an example, we needed to put some information out on a hats update. And Sandy, we had a video camera in the office, and she put it together and put it online in 10 minutes. And so we can actually look at doing that in our office. This was a suggestion. We were just hearing different comments, and we wanted to throw out another option for council to consider and evaluate. But I think it would be flexible, and it could be something that we could, for the, we're not expecting people to do it on their own. They would actually come into our office, and we would connect them, but it would not be through the Cable Trust.
Councilmember Levison.
I always like to interview everybody, because you do get a sense of the person and what they're about, but I am willing to try. The videotape, we'll see if some of that comes through. I'd give it a try. At least we can still see everyone who applies and hear their answers to the questions, and that's what's important.
Just an idea, why don't we keep doing what we've been doing, and just certain council members have to come? And then if we choose to all come, we can all come, and we just videotape them all. We all take turns. We can all be there. If we don't think it's appropriate, we don't have to show, and we all have access to the videos. Of course, I'm going to show Councilmember Levinson. I wouldn't miss that. It's a party.
I would move to make it mandatory for Councilmember Bagley to show.
So I think we've gotten direction, and we'll give this a shot. We'll try videotaping interviews, and I, you know, we'll work through the logistics of that.
I guess City Man, or City Attorney, any comments?
Mayor, comments? Council, I had two items placed on your dais. One is a call for exec session on the 27th for annual city attorney performance evaluation. And then there is a confidential packet with background materials for that. And then later this week, you'll be receiving an online survey to provide feedback that will assist in that evaluation.
Thank you. All right. This meeting was adjourned.